Thank you guys so much for making this possible.
All right, thank you, Bonnie Beck.
Hello there, I'm Bonnie Beck. I have an hour, I guess. Bonnie Beck, Public State Credit Union. I've been in town, living in town, for about, I don't know, a year or so. Never realized how much we really have to offer. We need to go behind the scenes, go and see, just really like dig in and see everything. That was one of the most important things to see, like especially how much there really is in the city park that people do take advantage of. Another big one for me was getting to work with all these creative people that were on to this. Leadership and how many new friends I made and built those relationships with the ones I already had. But I just really appreciate letting us use the city facility and being able to get out there and meet all those wonderful Dallas people that keep this city thriving.
All right, I want to hear from Jeff Long.
Jeff Long, I work for, work for the employment department. Covering the whole Mid Valley, so I'm different perspective. What everybody's said so far is true. It's a great course for folks, but I'm coming from the outside, not being in Polk County or Dallas. As we heard, there was great connections and everyone was able to actually see it firsthand. One thing that sticks out in my mind was the fire and ambulance. That is a spectacular place and the information that they gave us was just incredible. The CPR, it's a new apparatus that they're using that's automated. I don't know if any of you have ever seen this or heard this, that's incredible. But yeah, overall, it's just a great experience, I thought, connecting with the employers. I'm familiar with in Dallas or in Polk. It was great to be online personally, but also on the business side. Getting to know some of the folks firsthand is a great knowledge for me. I just wanted to thank Brian and his staff for doing the job of setting everything up and getting it all working. Thank you.
All right, Wendy Latta.
This ought to be good.
No relation.
This ought to be good.
You can leave the room, Brian. What they said as well, and I really liked going to the private organizations and seeing our industry in town that we do have and how excited they are about it. So I just wrote this little spiel, I think it's a minute, it's really small. But one thing that I really liked about this group was, so social media has potential for doing goodness, but on the other hand, it promotes idleness in our communities. Fifty to 75 years ago, people were doing Peace Corps, enlisting in the military, or volunteering at the school today. When they complain about things on the internet. And it doesn't do anything for the community, but it makes them feel better. And this project that we picked, we're like, oh, well, there's a problem. Let's get together with our community partners and see what we can do about it. And that's what I think this group did. It brought all of those community partners, government, non-government people together. There was people that donated that aren't government to this project. So I just liked that it gave us those tools and relationships for that, and I like these people too. And I wouldn't have known them otherwise, so I'm hoping for an opportunity.
All right, we'll hear from Arubiel Valaderas.
Hello, everybody, nice to be here, Arubiel Valaderas. The program was really interesting in many aspects, as everybody expressed. For me, it was really useful to see all of the players and elements to make the fire department, public safety, the police department, and like all the operations for the city. And capacity wise, it was nice to see that, to be able to make connections with the community that live here and work for the city as well. For me, one of the biggest, like seeing the fire department and how independent they are, and for example, I just finished my master's in public administration. And I wanted to ask about the levy, we're like, how, you know, all these ways to fund some of the, some of that capacity is important for me. Because I learned in school, not before, right? So I think that was a really good way to see how it works. I guess for me, like in the future, it would be, it was really challenging sometimes to attend from 12 to 5, to be able to have that time dedicated for it. And so I would navigate sometimes my meetings online or try to be there when not, but that's one of the challenges that I think we could definitely work on for all the people to be able to participate. Besides that, I think it's a great thing to participate, get to know some people, entrepreneurs, and like myself, I'm trying to do my little business and really share that with Polk County. So, and even talk about cultural intelligence too. So that's something that I learned and really glad to learn and get to new folks, otherwise I wouldn't, wouldn't otherwise met them or get to know nothing by now. Thank you.
So I have Eddie Nelson.
Hi, I'm Eddie Nelson, I'm with the Dallas Arts Association and the Dallas Food Bank. And contrary to Chris's statements, I do not spend the weekends in the county jail. I do have a home and I'm fine. What, the place that impressed me the most actually was the county jail, because I've always wondered what was behind the walls of that building. And for, to see such a sterile place with such quiet in there and it's so clean and it was kind of eerie to be in that building. But now I know what's behind there and I do not want to visit it. What impressed me the most was of course the passion for all of the business leaders that have visited. And I am amazed at how well our city works together as a unit. And without all these organizations, the private, the public, and the nonprofits, we wouldn't have such a great community. I would like to thank Brian for all the work that he has put in to bring all these organizations together and all these units to work as one fine machine. Because that's got to be one tough job to do and thank you, Brian, for doing that. I love Dallas, I love our city, and I love the people that live in it. Thank you, I gotta go back, I gotta go home now.
Like any good graduation ceremony, you can't leave until you get your diploma. All right, we'll have Jada Mazzio.
Hello, I really loved this program. I think one of the biggest things that stood out to me that I loved the most was just seeing how passionate everyone was at what they do. And for me, when I see somebody that's passionate about what they're doing, it makes me so happy because that's what we're supposed to be doing here on this earth. The things that we enjoy and things we're passionate about and seeing so many people all involved, from employees to volunteers, all of the nonprofits. It just really stood out to me and was really great to see. I learned so much, I feel like I have so much information now that I can share with other people when, you know, they have questions about certain things or things going on. And I'm just excited for more people to see what's actually happening in Dallas, because there's a lot and it's really great.
All right, and then finally, Robin Binjar. Oh, sorry, you're right, not finally, there's one more. I knew I'd make that mistake.
I'm Robin Binjar, and when Leadership Dallas, well, before Leadership Dallas started, our family had been working for years, about a year. And Brian, he's a student of Latta, he's Floran, and Brian talked to my husband and they got recruited again. I got to learn about things. That's pretty cool to be able to learn. A lot of people mentioned fire and EMS, that was also my favorite experience. What was really cool is they had all of their equipment laid out on tables. And they gave each of us a plan. We had to work together to figure out what everything was, and we did not do well. It was not, we were not even, we got a few things, but, and the other thing that I was really impressed with was how much, how many grants they take. I was impressed that they are using the taxpayer money for everything, that they are, they get as many grants as they possibly can to obtain their equipment. So, anyway, I, I really enjoyed the program, it was very informative and very interesting. Thank you, thank you, Brian, for setting it up and putting, you know, and all your staff members.
All right, and now last but not least, Holly Williamson, sorry Holly. I even have a checkbox list here and I'm not capable.
Thank you, guys, this was a lot of fun, I'm Holly Williamson, I try to bring financial education to our community. I also run the New to Dallas Lead Up Group. So this has been awesome, because now I have all of these resources that I can point people to, like, hey, you know, you've got kids, you've got elderly, you know, we've got a great senior center. I thought that was really fun, although the first week, they took us to the water treatment plant. I was like, what if we get into this, stinks. But I really enjoyed playing pickleball, that was fun, going to teach my kids how to play. But I was definitely very impressed with how all the departments work together and how well they all manage their money and try to get grants and spend things wisely. Obviously, being financial, I was like, wow, this is really awesome, it's great to be able to see our city do that. Let's see, I think that's about it, I just learned a lot from all different aspects. And my daughter is now doing the Dallas Youth Gardening Program. Yay! So, yeah, thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, so that was great, and I loved hearing everyone's perspectives. And this, the last nine months have been just wonderful, and this is my favorite thing, is when this group gets together, because they're fun, they're not shy, they all got to know each other really quick. And it was hard to rein them in, as Mayor Woods ran out tonight. It would, it would really upset me if I didn't take the time to thank our staff that helped to develop all these programs. That includes Charlie Mitchell, go ahead and stand up so we can recognize you. So Charlie, Emily Goner is here, there she is. April Wallace helped run one, that was awesome. And then those that aren't here include Gary Marks, Jennifer Ward, and Tammy Welty with our police department, so. And obviously, they all had a good time, so my staff, we're very grateful. And this was just a wonderful program, and it's something that, with the council wanting to help build capacity within our citizens, this is how we decided to implement that, and I think it's been very successful. And I look forward to next year and seeing what this group can come up with for the future program classes and, and the people that are going to participate. And I really think that this will be something that will just perpetuate and become very popular in our community and something that is just a great way to learn and be educated and get to know your community. So, we'll go ahead now and pass out your diplomas.
While they're getting up to pass out the diplomas, I think we owe Brian a round of applause. And then, the other thing I want to say is, before I let this captive audience out here that has now participated in the city of Dallas, Holly participated this year in the Budget Committee. How was that experience? Well, did you learn during this or during the Budget Committee?
It's tough. It is, but it was very impressive, probably, for I knew about every city that I know.
So we do have openings that occur quite often on the Budget Committee. It's another very short-term commitment, but it's a great way to learn about the city, what we offer, where the funding comes from. And so with that, I'll turn it back to, and we train you, yes. And Cecilia does a fantastic job training.
Right, so these are alphabetical by last name, so if you're trying to organize yourselves, you can do that, Holly doesn't call you that. Bonnie Beck.
Finally, Gretchen.
All right, and then if you could just stand on-
We're here.
Yeah, we have some else later. Tyler Ferrari. Wendy Lattner. All right, Madonna Lopez. Jeff Long. All right, Robin Vinyard. Eddie Nelson. All right, Jada Mazzio. Tara Townley. Arubiel Valdades. Chris Wallace.
Poor Holly, last year.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I didn't plan that very well. Anyway, just like my shots. So, only by the mayor to stand here, and the rest of you can come up in this highest. We're gonna come up here and, and just take a little group picture with you. Yeah, with your long sweaty. So, we really struggled in figuring what can we give you to, remember this experience. And we figured since it's a city's, a city program that we created, that we should do something kind of related to the city. Get it, it's 10 times. So we'll set this down, the streets. But we made these streets up.
Eddie, did you do that in jail?
So this has, this has the year, the year you graduated, 2023, your last name, and then the street type that came decided to stick best with your name. So, we have Beck Boulevard, Bonnie, can you get the tire? This one's not for me, it's Lata Lane. It's on Long Street. Long Louisville. Vinyard Road. Nelson Avenue.
Don't worry, Holly, you'll be last. But we greatly appreciate it.
I'm afraid of trails. Holly Derris Avenue. Yes, Wall's Way.
It's an experience.
The best way, it's the best way. And Long is fine. It's a layup. All right, so we want to try to get a picture here, so maybe bunch together.
I know. Souvenir.
I can get it for you.
I'm just standing here till-
Perfect.
Thank you. All graduated.
I still want to feel that.
You know, it's, it's the next week, so it's planning next year, right?
That's right. Especially now with the sign, yes, easy stuff. Okay.
I bet you had a request. Oh, the road show, Suave.
Oh. Uh, Charlie.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the Development Code Update Review.
All right, thank you, Mayor Woods. Charlie, do you want to make sure Chase is here? This will be very short without him. So, we're, we're bringing forward a package of development code updates and amendments to the development code. They have, this is a work in progress for the last nine or 10 months. We initially brought a package to the Planning Commission back, I believe, in September of this last year. There was some really, you know, good feedback from the community. At the first public hearing, we decided to take that information to a town hall where we gathered additional input. We then took the input that we received and made revisions to the proposed code language from September and brought it back to the Planning Commission just recently, within the last month or so. The Planning Commission considered that information. I'm just giving the brief synopsis chase of the history. The Planning Commission, you know, reviewed the information, the initial proposals, the public testimonies received, received additional public testimony at the public hearing, held the record open to receive additional public testimony, did not receive any, but gave plenty of opportunity for additional public input. The Planning Commission then deliberated and recommended the council the proposed amendments that are here in your packet. And so our city planner, Chase Blue, will walk us through some of the more substantive changes, and maybe some of those that received public testimony and some in opposition, so that you can understand what to expect when you hold a public hearing on this item in July, right, or June.
I thought it was June 20th.
It's June 20th. I think you're right, I think we're doing a public hearing on June 20th.
Although, you want to do it in July.
I think we, I think we advertised for June 20th, so it better be June 20th. So we'll have a public hearing with the council on June 20th. We'll have the opportunity to accept the testimony and the information here. So tonight's really just information gathering, learning what these are. If you have questions or some comments on the, on the proposals, we're happy to, you know, entertain those tonight. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Chase.
Yes, thank you. So, as, as Brian was saying, we discussed this with the council last year. We identified some potential problems and solutions with the, with the Planning Commission. We crafted some new code language, discussed that. Made some revisions to the code language. Planning Commission had a public hearing, they made a recommendation to the city council in support of these proposed changes. We're now at the point where we're discussing that with you, the city council. And then a council hearing and adoption will be a future step. So there were a number of items that generated more public interest, I would say more public input than some of the others did. Notable ones were self-storage uses, bicycle parking, garage setbacks, and sidewalk standards. So, kind of stepping through those with some pictures to help illustrate. We'll start with the self-storage. That is currently allowed in our industrial zone, it's prohibited in all other zones. Consideration of this was first kind of repressed by the Economic Development Commission. Kind of the core concern around self-storage is that it can consume a lot of land without creating very many jobs. So, when we're looking at what is the highest and best use of our industrial land, what is, you know, kind of the economic need of the city, this may not be the highest and best use. So we're seeing how we can get a more intensive use of our land while still allowing for a muted service. And so we proposed some language that would require multi-story structures that would limit the overall acreage of a single dwelling, that would have a spacing standard, so you don't have a whole bunch of them all right next to each other, placing them away from major roadways, try and preserve that transportation capacity for uses that generate substantial traffic, which self-storage usually doesn't. As well as architectural and blazing standards, if they are more attractive uses. As well as including some exceptions for pre-aging. It's noteworthy that all of the self-storage facilities built in Dallas feature multi-story structures. So the idea of having a multi-story structure is not, you know, under the question, we already have those here in Dallas. So trying to have the code move in a direction that it's, the industry is already somewhat supporting the development, getting more intensive use out of our land. So that's kind of where some of those standards come from. You know, not reinforcing the wheel, kind of from some other jurisdictions, from some, you know, the necessity that the Dallas context would be better. Standards, could they use further revision? Well, you have some public testimony, we can address that. But always as a proposal, that's what we have for you. Bicycle parking, we kind of have two major sets of changes, design standards and quantity. So design standards, we really don't have anything in the code that specifies what a bike rack is. So it's kind of like, how to support the requirement to points, just have a space for movement. Obviously, you have a bicycle in place for this. But supporting it is important, because if you- Bikes fall over. Not supporting it, you have a wheel holder, bikes fall over, wheels get thumped, not good. So that's kind of where that design standard comes from, of supporting it at two points. For multifamily uses specifically, we're looking at some additional design standards. Multifamily uses, it's basically a commercial workplace. Your bikes are in the car, or- To having a heightened standard for multifamily situations. Having them be secure and sheltered from the weather, but not being in the dwelling unit, not being balcony, in ways more convenient. Something like a dedicated bicycle room or a situation, even a bicycle enclosure. If you have like a townhouse kind of development, having a bicycle enclosure next to you relatively simple. Not having it within the dwelling unit, not having it on the balcony, which is both an ice or a safety hazard. You know, you, you, you look at that, you think, oh, no one would ever put a bicycle rack above their bed. When I was at the University of Portland State University, my boyfriend lived in the dorms, and the official bike rack, if you lived in the dorms, was mounted above your head. Which is exactly where you want to put your bike after you've been riding in the rain and all drippy, with everything. And so, as a homeowner, most of the dwellings in the dorm building did have a bike, because they had the place to put them. So, not having it in the dwelling, having it someplace where you can safely store it or it's not in your convenience. And then the final standard there on quantity. Currently, the standard for bicycle parking at multifamily is one space per 20 dwellings, which is just laughably small. So we're looking at one bicycle space per dwelling. Standard is basically a bedroom, so it is a little bit of a slant. Also, additional language around apartments, we have automobile parkings, that would be in the downtown, where there is no parking environment. Will possibly as a result of a variance or some type of condition of use for a certain kind of specific, hard to foresee that, but we had some language addressing that kind of situation as well. Next one that kind of came up was Ron's second, who I necessarily looked at the driveway dump. Currently, our standard is 20 feet from the garage door. The current standard is 20 feet from the property line to the garage door. The, the issue is that if you have 20 feet from your property line to your door, and then you've got a large vehicle, say a Ford F-150 Supercat that is 20 feet, eight inches, how do you park that in your 20-foot driveway? Especially if you're not, you know, pushing it all the way up to where your steering on the garage door, right? So, having some additional wiggle space in the driveway definitely makes that more feasible. Obviously, vehicles hanging over the sidewalk, whether it's a few inches or a few feet, Obviously, vehicles hanging over the sidewalk, whether it's a few inches or a few feet, impacts the, you know, ADA issues, wheelchair, you know, strollers, kids' bikes, it's kind of an issue. And it's a common issue. This is a street here in Dallas. I won't name the street. I don't want to, you know, shame anyone here. But when the problem is quite large enough that you can literally see it from space, maybe that's something that we should consider updating our codes to. So the next one that I thought I'd like to slide for is the sidewalk standard. Many subdivisions in Dallas have been built with the sidewalks right against the curb. Other subdivisions have been built with a landscaping strip between the curb and the sidewalk for the sidewalk is up against the property line. The code doesn't specify which of those two designs is the standard. So code's proposing to make the landscape strip style the standard where the sidewalk is not against the curb. That has significant improvements in terms of ADA accessibility. You no longer have driveways going up and down every few feet. It makes wheelchair ramps a corner, gives you a complete advantage of garbage, not as much as the sidewalk. Achieve all sidewalk and non-garbage, it's not very pleasant environment. So for that and a whole host of other reasons, I'm hoping this will be the standard B to have the curbs, sidewalks not be curbed height. Tie back into that, set backs, if you're putting the sidewalk down against the property line, it's from property line. The goal was wouldn't be between property and sidewalk, so I'm going to. Those are really the issues that came up as a major concern. So I'm happy to answer questions on those or any of the other topics that came up. And I'm seeing Kim kind of trying to, so I guess we'll start with you.
I just have a question. So I walked through Sears Glen and they have the curb, rain garden, the sidewalk. I guess I never really paid attention. Where do they put their trash can? When they put their trash out? Do they put it in the, because they can't put it in the garden and it's too far on the sidewalk.
Yeah, so putting it itself certainly could be an option. Putting it in the street against the curb could be an option. It just kind of depends on.
Yeah. And so our city code encourages people to put it on the street against the curb, is what's, right, right. And so that's what the code says people should do. Culture, depending on the neighborhood you're in, will tell you that you put it on the sidewalk. And so, you know, we've talked about, you know, this and we put it in our newsletter a lot. Put your trash out, put it on the curb, you know, not on the sidewalk. So there's this education that needs to go along with that. But when you have a separated sidewalk, so you have the curb and then a landscape area, grass, rock, whatever's there, rain gardens, and then the sidewalk, you can't put your trash can on the sidewalk, it's too far away from the vehicle, the trash vehicles pick it up. So it forces it to go on that landscaped area or on the street where it should go. And so that's, you know, the trash issue becomes a non-issue if you have separated sidewalks in your community. And so what we're, one of the reasons why we're saying, hey, it can't be one or the other, it has to be, is because our code is required through the state land just planning to be clear and objective, which means we can't have discretionary standards, right? You can do this, or you can do that. It has to be one or the other. And so we're, you know, we're saying that, recommending that, hey, a separated sidewalk standard makes more sense for a variety of reasons, as Chase talked about, right? ADA accessibility, when you have the sidewalk right against the curb, the sidewalk now undulates up and down based on the driveway approaches. If it's separated, they have the curb, curb approaches have an apron before it gets up to the sidewalk. So you have a more level surface. So it's better for that reason. The trash issue, it's better for that reason. Now, the concern though is, on the other side, is that your sidewalks are now at the back edge of the property line and the right of way. And so with the large vehicles, you know, overhanging into the right of way or over sidewalks, where you have a separated sidewalk, that issue is going to become more common, which is why Chase is proposing an additional five feet of driveway width.
That's a bunch of garbage.
Thank you for the fun.
I wanted to add one thing. In my neighborhood, I don't, can't put the curb because the raccoons will knock them over. So I move it out about two feet into the street and they don't seem to bother at that moment. If it's up against the curb, they'll reach up and pull it backwards on the lawn and there's garbage everywhere.
Chase, can you talk a little bit about electric vehicle and bike charging and?
Those are kind of two different topics.
There are two different topics. I mean, really, since you talked about bikes, can you maybe just talk about bikes?
Right. So this is something that some of the larger, more like biky kind of cities go into. Portland has a language on requiring electric outlets within a certain distance, the bicycle parking areas, especially as you can, you can. Our code proposal didn't go quite that far. Definitely, you know, EVs are gaining in popularity rapidly, especially as prices are coming down. But.
Level of specialty. That's kind of the question, why didn't we have a test, especially given that in the next few years, I anticipate that I A, whatever, International Falcon, whatever that is, is going to say, don't charge your bicycle, don't charge on the side of your house or in the garage.
Right. I was going to add, including some of the New York City area with some recent, the technology of the period is a close, so hopefully, in the next few years, we'll have some technology improved. But yeah, it's, in the house that could catch fire is never a good idea. Yeah, it's not really something that our code proposal addressed. And it seems like, you know, looking at nationally, it's not some of the, it's really sorted out yet. Certainly, we could be a pioneer and try something. But electrical outlets also seem to be something that would be relatively easy to retrofit into a situation. Now, car charging is kind of a different ballgame because that's a much higher electricity, you know, usage in terms of voltage. But also parking lots are much larger than, you know, so there is some.
More capital intensive to be equipped to do it.
Certainly, there is some higher power demand needs as well. There is some state legislation now that is requiring electrical conduit to be installed to a certain percentage of parking spaces as part of new construction. That doesn't actually require any equipment to be installed, so an empty conduit isn't going to charge your car. Certainly, you could consider having some, there should actually be a pedestal or a hookup on that conduit. But right now, we're kind of just staying with the state requirement, which is still better than not.
You took it into consideration, but I heard that you don't get there anymore.
You know, as someone who lives in an electric car and who lives in an apartment which does not have electric vehicle charging, certainly, I think that a more aggressive, I think perhaps we could afford.
Right, thank you.
Since she brought up electric bikes, I don't even know how to bring that word up. ORS 814.410 subsection, bicycles are not allowed on sidewalks at all. They're motorized vehicles under the state law. Did you want that?
That might have implications as we build out the Rickertale Creek Trail, which will have some sidewalking sections. We need to think about that a little more critically as we plan those sections. Thank you for letting me know.
It's sidewalks.
Right, and it's just sidewalks. So those, what do you call them?
It'd be up, yeah, it'd be up to interpretation. And since we're getting state parks grants for the Rickertale Creek Trail, state parks flat out identify as e-bikes as motorized vehicles and therefore have to be on those. Just, this is education, not science. I was very curious about it. I've been getting constituents that are not happy with the speed of the e-bikes coming down and the size of them on the Rickertale Creek Trail and having to avoid them because they're, they don't put the little ding ding dongs on the little bikes, but a lot of the bicycles have the little bells on them. And so people are getting concerned about the speeds on the Rickertale Creek Trail.
So they aren't legal or illegal to use?
They're illegal, well.
That's the trick. It seems like the funding source is a factor on that.
Funding source could be a factor on the Rickertale Creek Trail if it's deemed a sidewalk and walkways, if it's deemed a walkway and this is where Lane would have to start weighing in.
Or a trail.
Oh, well.
Use path, sidewalk, yeah, I haven't looked at it, so I could take a look.
Yeah, well, we'll take a look at it and we'll report back to the council on that. Maybe during the public hearing on this item. Let's go back to, I'm not opposed to increasing the setback to the garage. I think five feet's a little aggressive, especially since I don't know of a jurisdiction that has that setback. The setbacks I'm familiar with are Salem and Newport. Actually, I know that everybody's 20 feet. So do you know of any that are over 20 feet?
So I was not able to locate any. I have been calling around to some different jurisdictions. Thus far, I've not been able to locate any that were over 20. Some of the folks that I spoke with did acknowledge that they've had the issue of vehicles overhanging sidewalks, but 20 seems to be kind of the number, if not less. Some of them were quite small. One of them was 12 feet. I'm not entirely sure how they expected that to work. And their response was, well, you just kind of walk around the cars. It's like, well, if I'm in a wheelchair, how do I do that? Not my problem, not my city, but.
Newport has a very interesting setback. It's a setback to the garage doors from zero to five feet or 20 or more.
Sure, I could see that because if it's under a certain size, you really can't park anything in front of it. Yep.
This is a little reminiscent of the old cliche, what the parent and child conversation, well, all the other kids are doing it. Well, if all the other kids were jumping off a cliff, would you beat the rap? This is kind of the other side of that coin. I mean, I think what we need to focus on is what makes the most sense, not what anybody else is doing. Because you highlighted the problem very well with your F-150 example. This is an issue that maybe hasn't been an issue before now, but it is becoming one. I think we should do what makes sense rather than.
Well, even our 20-foot setback is still quite recent. If you look at the Dallas Development Code in prior iterations, it had a much larger front setback for the house in its entirety. So our current setbacks are quite a bit more liberal than they were 23 years ago, so.
But the curb, the property fence is the back of curb. It's a big difference.
We also need to take into account that Disability Rights Oregon is actively pursuing cities where you can't navigate because there's stuff. So I'd be fine with thinking, okay, we can leave it at 20, but then we have to sort of something that says, next thing you come to the car.
Yeah, you know, it's the old prevention, this is an opportunity to do what we give priority.
Because if we start going and issuing parking tickets, I mean, you saw how many circles there were just on that one block, like.
Typically, the.
The expense of that we would have to employ in the public, in the neighborhoods and tag all the cars that are hanging over.
We already do that, though. We already, yeah, we already employ two humans to do that in the city of Dallas. And so I don't think there's added cost that would be required as part of this. That would just be one of the other things that they would look for in going out and doing code enforcement. I would say that, you know, with a 20-foot setback, you're accommodating most vehicles, right, on the market. There are some vehicles that are larger and, but honestly, it is, it's a code education process of our code enforcement, putting out, hey, we're parking this large vehicle in your driveway, it doesn't fit. So that vehicle needs to be parked on the street. And that could be the solution for them, right, or in their garage, if they have a garage, and maintain a 20-foot setback. I'm less concerned about the city of Dallas being sued because of a person's choice to buy a larger vehicle than what fits on their property. I would be more concerned for the individual who bought the larger vehicle blocking the sidewalk, getting sued because they're blocking the sidewalk. So I don't think there's liability in length, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the city is going to be not held liable for that situation because we impose standards that made sense for most people, you know, most vehicle types. So I don't, I think that a larger standard would accommodate, you know, all vehicle types today. That doesn't mean it's going to accommodate all vehicle types in the future. But you also have to, yeah, Chase laughs, you know, his perspective is those vehicles might get smaller, you know, I think they might get larger.
They only ever seem to get bigger.
Right. And so you just, you really have to think about, you know, is, you know, going above 20 feet, I think you would be pioneering a little bit for the state of Oregon. But there's other impacts to that 25-foot setback, right? Now you're going to, you know, force, you know, housing to be taller because they don't have as much depth on their lots because now that you're pushing the building envelope to be smaller on the property, you may, you know, not get certain lots able to be developed because of this. So there are some implications that way. So, you know, is 25 feet the right number? I don't know. It's what we're proposing, it's what the planning commission recommended. Is a smaller, is a smaller number, but larger than 20, like 22 feet, the compromise? Or is 20 feet just what the council feels appropriate?
It's also worth mentioning that if we get it wrong, we can fix it later.
Yeah, I mean, this is not a, yeah, we amend the code from time to time. And so, you know, the question for the council, the policy decision is that right now, the standard's 20 feet, is today the right time to amend that to a larger number or not?
And we do have the variance process for when there are properties that would not be developable because of that setback. Like if there are site-specific hardships, we do have that variance process for that very reason, so.
Chase, what were you saying about e-bikes cannot be charged inside the garage?
So I wasn't saying that specifically. There's been some talk in the New York City area about limiting charging of e-bikes inside buildings because they've had a couple of fires recently. But yeah, it's certainly something that is a concern when you have equipment inside of a building that, you know, generates heat and energy that could potentially cause a fire, whether that's a stove, whether that's a clothes dryer, battery charger. Anytime you've got that sort of stuff indoors, it's a risk.
I was just curious if it's our problem that you bought the electric bike?
I wouldn't say it's necessarily the city's problem per se until it's the city's fire department that has to deal with the consequences. So, yeah. It's like, is it the city's fault that you bought a gas stove that's now leaking? Well, if the city fire department has to go deal with the consequences, maybe it is. So.
I'd tell everybody that if you buy this battery-operated car, I said, well, your homeowner rates are going to go up because of the fire ability that's going to create when it catches on fire in the garage while it's charging. They just laugh. But it's true.
Question about sidewalk widths? The reason we're going from 10 foot to 12 foot on the multipath? I mean, I just went down, I'm only familiar with the Rickertale Creek Trail and I know that we have wider ones that are up on Academy Street. I think those are 12, are they 10 or 12s?
I don't recall.
Is there a reason why we're going two feet wider?
It seemed like 12 was kind of the standard that was in other documents. Sort of the extent that the current trail has segments that weren't built out as 12, it seems like the new standard is 12. Again, whether that's the appropriate number or a different number is appropriate, certainly that's a discussion to be had, but.
What section of the trails of the Rickertale Creek Trail is built out wider than 10?
I don't have the tape measures.
Yeah, so Chase, I guess the question, to just clarify what you said, you said it's specified in other documents as 12 feet. What documents are you referring to? The Transportation System Plan, the Comp Plan?
Parks Master Plan. Is my reflex, again, I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, so that's a good question that I think Councilor Schilling is asking. We can connect with our parks manager and provide that information at the public hearing, you know, what segments of the Rickertale Creek Trail are 10 feet versus 12 feet. We'll also identify what facility and master plans have different widths. The, okay, I got to step back and tell you, because this is Devolent, I dove straight into it because I have a lot of knowledge on Devolent because Chase and I banter back and forth all the time and we're trying to get clarity. And I love the clarity, you're doing a great job. Thanks for getting it clear.
I have, yeah, there's one area that we'll talk about getting a little clearer. What, the definition of making sure we reference somehow the automobile parking in the multifamily? Just need to clarify where that's referenced. Because if I provide two spots, to me, that's not what your intent is. The intent was that it's per the code and standard standards. So it just might be automobile standards or something, I don't know. The reason I brought up the 20-foot setback and 25-foot setback wasn't, it's whatever it's been. Less houses to be able to be built on a, less houses on the same property. Or you're going to cover more land because the five foot that you're giving, you can't put the same house on. We're hitting all setbacks all the time. It was great when the city went to 20-foot setbacks, the 10-foot backyard is. Anytime that you increase the driveway, I would, I'm throwing darts. I'd say that's between $5,000 and $9,000 increase in that house. Unless, I mean, it's just going to go up that much. It's, I don't have solid numbers, but if you take an average lot of $90,000 and you kind of work that way and then the extra concrete, it comes up to that. So affordability is one of the issues I was thinking of. And then the bicycle parking, I'm a little more concerned not, I love the portion of it that's below where the automobile parking is. I understand the need for more bicycle parking and encouraging it. I don't know about sheltering the bicycles where the automobile parking is because I go to the apartments and the sheltered bicycle spaces that are there already are not used. I don't know if we could make an exception for if automobile parking is, but we go ahead and. It's just a suggestion, I'm just throwing that out for everybody to think about.
I know there was a conversation when we talked about the trail system and the width of the sidewalk. And I remember the conversation talking about wide enough for emergency vehicles to drive on if they needed to.
Certainly could be a consideration, yes, parks, maintenance vehicles as well, it's certainly.
Or if you need an ambulance down there, you can get there.
Right, and if you look at the current table that we have, 3413F for bike ped connections, which we're re-titling. But it specifies six to a minimum 12-foot wide paved with path with landscaping as kind of the current standard. So it's just taking the high end of what the development code already says. Now, again, is that the correct number? Should be some other number. That's a council decision, but currently it is six to 12 feet. So making it 12 is clear and objective. Again, part of it is getting that clear and objectiveness. Well, is it six feet? Is it 12 feet? Is it something in between? That's something that we could be challenged on. Who gets to decide that? Whereas if you say that it's 12 feet, like that's clear, you can take tape measure to that. There's no interpretation of, well, in this circumstance, it's this, but in these circumstances, it's something different. Now, is that the correct number to have as the default? Again, that's a council decision, but having a clear and objective number is kind of the goal.
And that's where I go back to Rickel Creek Trail. Rickel Creek Trail is a beautiful trail. I walk it pretty much every day. And my only concern about going wider is, is the. Or are we starting to make it look like a road? Emergency vehicles can go down an eight-foot path. And they do. People cut the corners every now and then, especially by the 20 center where it's kind of your intersection, but they get by.
I can imagine there's kind of areas that you can't put in a 12-foot paved because the the cut from the property lines as well as from the creek itself may not have the room.
I'm a little concerned about going to, were we designing the connection by the public works buildings at 12? Or was that designed at 10?
I don't know what the design was for that.
My recollection was designed at 12 with an option for 10 where there was the one retaining. We're looking at options to acquire additional land that would.
Thing to its cost.
Yeah, and so I think, you know, again, it's good to stop. And it's really a policy decision, as Chase said, right? The code right now says six to 12. We need to eliminate that as part of the code because of what the state law tells us. And so I think the best course of action is for us to go out and measure the different sections of the Rickel Creek Trail. So we have an understanding of, you know, what's eight foot versus 10 foot and if anything's smaller or bigger. And then we can bring that back to the public hearing so you'll have that information when you make your decision.
Any other questions?
Well, I certainly want to thank Chase and our city attorney, Elaine, and Charlie Mitchell. You know, four of us got together and, you know, spent a lot of time going through the development updates and tweaking the language based in large part on the public testimony that we received through the process and the town halls that we had. And so I thank the planning commission for their review. We look forward to bringing this back to the council in a couple of weeks.
That's it? Move on to other business?
Yeah, I don't have any other business. I would be interested in hearing from the council about the leadership program and what you maybe felt about that. We can talk about that for a few minutes if you'd like.
I loved that and I wish when I moved here, I would have had any kind of program like that. Because I just, the reason I've learned so much about Dallas since I moved here is that I'm incredibly nosy. And I wanted to know, like, what the different neighborhoods are like and, you know, what do they do there? You know, there's a different vibe in one part of town compared to another. So that's how I got, in fact, Tara, who, anyone that knows Tara knows that if you're going to make friends with someone who's going to introduce you to literally everyone, it'd be Tara. And she's one of the first people I met. And she took me to different store owners and different neighborhoods and this is that. These are what the schools are like. So, yeah, I think it's an awesome program and I'm excited to see what they want to plan for the next batch of people. That was a great batch of people.
Didn't we name a city for the next time rather than just a street?
No, we didn't even name streets for them. We just got the street signs, so. Yeah, yeah, there, if all of a sudden a ladder lane pops up somewhere in town, I'm going to be after my wife on that. No, but it was. Yeah, well, there's one of those. But no, it's, this was a really, this was an experimental program. Other communities have done this and it just seemed like some way, something that we could do to help, again, engage our community, especially as, you know, we're going out on the road show this year, you know, there's 15 people. The activists right in the city and what we're doing. And, and, you know, anytime we go out, we bond to buy both, you know, fire trucks or police vehicles or whatever. Building the capacity of people just to understand what it takes, right? What the community is all about, whether it's the city of Dallas. We designed it intentionally to be just not like a citizens academy, like, come learn everything that the city of Dallas does for you. It's what is your community, right? Charlie did an excellent job at engaging the business community and the nonprofits out there. And he brought in, you know, the business community down to the civic center. And, you know, the participants got to eat, you know, ice cream from Dreamy's Creamery. And they learned about, you know, Salt Creek Cider House outside of town. And they got to tour, you know, Knife River and they toured. They didn't tour McMillan, did they? No, that was. They went to a Centec and they toured a Centec. And they, you know, Gary did a wonderful job at, you know, inviting them in to understand the arts, you know, and the artists and the poets and the singers and the musicians in town. And, you know, just did a really good job with that. Jennifer did a really good job with introducing them to the Parks and Recreation and connecting them up with the different groups that pick the ball. And they all want to learn how to play disc golf and throw discs. And it wasn't just, you know, hey, come to city hall, learn about services and get them out in the community. One of my favorite things, which wasn't talked about. And seeing how dispatch works, right? And this is a service that provides emergency response, getting into your house and people that would help you. It's how that works, right? And they were able to see the dispatch and different types of machines that take place. And there's, you know, TV screens and all. Just to learn that was really neat. It was just a really, a really good experience. I learned a lot myself going, just participating in it. And, yeah, it was really good. It's, everyone that moved into Dallas went through, you know, because they have capacity to get everyone through that. Because you learn so much.
I would love to see more.
Level?
Yes, I'd love to see more people who just live here. All the nosy people, right? To feel like this is my home and I do know what's going on. I would love to figure out how, I would love for them to figure out how to get more people. I'm happy that we had employees of the city and have businesses. We can actually have more people.
Yep, yeah, and we had, so the only employee from the city that participated was Tyler, right? So Tyler was the only city employee that participated. You know, I harassed my wife to make sure she was in it, just to make sure we had a full class.
You just wanted the streets.
Well, really, no, I didn't know I was going to do this sign until later. But, but my, this was a good way for my wife to connect, right? And feel more of a part of the community. And, you know, her friend Robin was the same way. But Ladonna Level was an interesting case because when she applied, we let her know, hey, you're accepted. And she's like, oh, really? I don't want to really do it. I just put my name in thinking I wasn't going to get picked. And we're like, well, you're picked and so come do it. And she was really kind of hesitant at first and she didn't want to give us like her contact information and stuff like that to share with everyone else. But after the first session, she was like all in. And, you know, Ladonna is a wonderful lady that we've learned a lot about. And she is now serving on 150th Planning Committee for next year. You know, so she's putting in and being more engaged than she was. And she's lived here her whole life, right? But she's doing more now civically than she's probably done before. And it's because of this class. And so that's, again, another success that we want to see, right? Want to build community capacity and get people engaged who wouldn't otherwise be engaged. This was not a big barrier for entry. We charged $95. We'll probably charge a little bit more next year because we didn't cover all of our costs. So the city subsidized it a little bit, it's outlined in the report. But, so we'll probably increase the price a little bit. We did offer scholarships for anyone, so if it was a barrier, we could still get them in, which I'm sure we'll do again next year. But it was a low-cost, high-benefit, high-reward program. And I think it was just something that we should continue to participate in and encourage over the next several years.
That's, it showed well that almost the whole class was, sometimes you do these things. They were pumped up. That was quite a crowd, so.
Yeah, and they were excited. I mean, they were loud. It was hard to keep them under control sometimes, but they were very comfortable with each other.
And that's another thing.
No, my wife was not the ringleader. Tara was a ringleader.
There's a ringleader, it's Tara.
Yeah, Tara was a good ringleader. Holly Williamson was a good ringleader. But, and they had, they didn't like break off into their little, you know, groups, right? They were, they would all interchange. And so we met, started meeting in the civic center, we'd have lunch there for them. And we would set up like two blocks of tables and it was never the same. You know, people sat at the different tables each time. And so they really did buy into things. And it was really good. We were happy with it. That's all for me. Yeah, come back with council.
We'll have a quick recess and be back in a minute.
We'll have a quick recess and be back in a minute. Call of Dallas City Council meeting for June 5th, 2023 to order. Secretary will call the roll, please.
Council President Chilling?
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Verghanto?
Here.
Counselor Briggs?
Here.
Counselor Collins?
Present.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Counselor Jants?
Here.
Counselor Shane?
Here.
Counselor Virgin?
Here.
There's a quorum?
Quorum.
We've got a full council.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is introduction. That's an introduction, Mr. Editor.
We do, Mayor. We have three introductions tonight. And I want to turn the time over to our interim Fire Chief April Wallace to make those. Maybe just two. I said maybe just two.
Are they prepared for that? Are they prepared for that 20-minute speech? Welcome aboard. Next is a public comment. Please provide us with your name and address for the record. You have up to five minutes. And as your turn to talk and ours to listen, please direct all comments to the mayor. The mayor will refer to staff for readily available information or for follow-up as needed. Delectatory or malicious comments will now be accepted. Distractions take attention from the speaker. The audience, city council members, and city staff are having a focus on the speaker during their time by being respectfully quiet. I do have one question. Go ahead.
623 Southwest Center in Dallas. And I haven't been here forever, but I'm here now. So I want to just give a short report of how things are. Great. For us, we have about $9,700 in our checking account. We usually always try to keep $10,000 in there for swim passes and party pass. Things that we give out to pay for. But we only had 10% of our donors donate anything this year. And five banners did not renew this year, which is very disturbing to me. But anyway, that's the way it is. Caskey Home Center is working on a banner for us. So I don't know how long that'll take. We've got corporations to deal with. But we're going to be at the booth for, with the Aquatic Center, Crazy Days, and hand out passes. And we have our next meeting on June 20th. And we'll just see where we stand. One of our members, Nancy Wilson, is on indefinite leave from our board because she's been really ill. And so we want her to rest as much as she can. And the rest of us are going to meet in June. We'll probably take a summer off other than Crazy Days until September. I think that's all I have to say.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to introduce the new arrival?
I certainly can. So this is Captain Bryce, that's from, he comes to us from Northern. We are, we're the Fire Grounds. We are very excited to have him. He is part of that 4896 ship. So he is our nighttime firefighter. And we're very, very grateful that we have all three houses in place. A large whole piece, which is a one, with that and the 4896 response.
Welcome. Is there anybody online that wants somebody there? Next thing is consent agenda. And the consent agenda includes the minutes from the city council work session for March, May 15th. And the city council meetings are also May 15th. Do you think you want to withdraw from the consent agenda? Donat entertaining motion.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved to approve in seconds. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, carries unanimously. Report your comments from the mayor and council members. If you have anything, yes, sir.
I just want to put it on public record to congratulate the high school girls softball team for being state champions. And I just want to make sure that they get their note in our public record.
We should have them here at a future meeting.
Schedule next time.
And noteworthy that Mayor Woods' granddaughter's on that team.
She's one of the four sophomores that start. She need a couple, who feels. Not that I'm prejudiced. In fact, it was very good. They had a parade. They had an impromptu parade this morning. They went to all the schools in town. As ordered by sheriff's office, police department, and fire department. And they stopped in front of the courthouse. And there was a lot of people there waiting. Good times. I want, I have something I want to share with you that I was told that on July 12th, Ladonna is having an open house out at the fairgrounds for the 2251 interchange. And it's from 4:00 to 7:00. If you want to go look at it and talk to them and ask them questions. It's going to be at the Polk County Fairgrounds, Building B, is a baker. And this is what they call the Rookdale Road to Dokes Ferry Road project. It is basically the 2251 interchange. It's going to be somewhat similar to what you saw here a couple of weeks ago. But this is a chance for the public to look at it and they'll have. They can answer questions. So anyway, it's on July 12th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Can you move on?
I have something. Yeah, so June is Pride Month, and I have a little statement I wanted to read. Pride Month is a time for celebration, remembrance, and most importantly, reflection. Dallas has, in the past, not been a safe haven for our LGBTQIAA2S+ community. And we have to carry the weight of that history, which was marred by discrimination and injustice. But this offers us an opportunity to pause and recognize the struggles, triumphs, and resilience of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgendered, queer, questioning intersex, pansexual, two-spirit, and asexual neighbors, friends, and family members who have endured hardships that we will never be able to truly comprehend. And while we cannot erase the past, we can shape a brighter future here in Dallas. And we have a commitment to change. Understanding and a genuine desire to create a city that is truly safe and welcoming to all. To all of our LGBTQIAA2S+ community, I want to extend my heartfelt apologies for the pain and discrimination that you have endured. Your experiences matter, and I, for one, am very committed to amplifying your voices and to ensure that they're being heard and respected. As a city, we should embrace diversity as our greatest strength, dismantling barriers that divide us and bridging, building bridges of inclusivity. And this means we have to challenge our own biases, educate ourselves, and foster an environment within ourselves that only, not only tolerates, but celebrates differences. Discrimination should have no place within Dallas's city borders. We should all work tirelessly to promote equal rights and opportunities for every individual, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. And I also want to express my gratitude for the LGBTQIAA2S+ community for their resilience and unwavering spirit here in Dallas. Your contributions to our city are relatively immeasurable. And I am committed to ensuring that your lives are honored and celebrated every day, not just during June's Pride Month.
Thank you.
I have a couple tiny things.
Sure.
So DHS graduation is the ninth. And according to their office, if city officials or elected officials want to attend, they can contact the school, and they have a limited number of tickets. Morrison's graduation is at DHS in the gym on June 15th at 6:00 p.m., and all of the public is invited. So if anyone wants to come see, there's plenty of room. We invite everybody. We're excited for all of them.
Anything else? Moving on. Reports from the city manager and staff.
Mayor Woods. So we have two items tonight. The first is found on page six of your agenda, and it is related to the Economic Development Commission appointment. We did receive three applications when we did the solicitation for filling the one vacancy that we have on this commission. We received those applications, provided them to Mayor Woods because per section of City Code 2.905 Subsection 2, the city council will appoint membership to this commission upon a recommendation of the mayor. As noted above, Mayor Woods has recommended Jim Bauer for appointment to the EDC. So there is a recommended motion at the bottom of this report to make that appointment with the term expiring on December 31st, 2026. I'm moved to appoint Jim Bauer to the Economic Development Commission with the term expiring on December 31st, 2026.
Oh, second. Any discussion? If I may say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
In this court, invite our assistant manager Emily Gahn. You're up to give that report.
Good evening, mayor councillors. So at the April 3rd council meeting, you approved a contract amendment for the city manager's contract, which states that you will consider in June a cost of living adjustment to his salary. It's June, so as stated in the staff report, the nonrepresented and absentee represented employees, assuming their contract gets ratified, will be receiving a 5% cost of living adjustment. Minimum wage is going up 5% this year. The Dallas Police Employee Association contract states- states that they'll get a 4% cost of living adjustment this year. And we're still negotiating the EMS contract. So I don't know what their cost of living adjustment would be. That's what everybody else is receiving this year. You can choose to give the city manager a cost of living adjustment or not. If you do decide to, we will need to do, we'll need to tweak the budget, I believe, because we did not budget a cost of living adjustment for the city manager in the current, for next year.
Can we do that before we vote on it?
Yes. Any questions?
To me, it doesn't, excuse me. To me, it doesn't feel quite right with the elements in the room and the fact we're going to be asking citizens to be reducing services. It just seems like even tougher service. Citizens of Dallas, in the light of offering a, and by any means, earn it or deserve it. But I just would like everybody to be aware and open up some discussion on that.
Whatever, whatever, whatever side you need to calculate, what impact that would have.
We did the same with the other employees.
Again, I.
Except it's.
We have to choose that.
Yeah, did you, or. And then I would, we would just let Cecilia know what that amount was, and she would do the calculations for her enormous spreadsheet.
I was just trying to get an idea because this is dollars and cents or millions and cents.
It's not millions and cents.
It's not millions.
Let me make sure that.
I just threw that out to see if people.
I don't have my phone with me to run a quick calculation.
I would assume it's around the $8,000 mark. I'd roughly, no. Let me run a quick calculation. Eight grand, 5% roughly.
David?
So. Given that we, back in April, already decided we probably wanted to do this, and if we now decide that we want a backpedal that makes us look something less than decisive and consistent in what we believe, you know, everything costs money. Everything's showing up. We all know that. Everybody in the world knows that. But, you know, we hired a city manager that we think is one of the best around. But I think we have to do whatever we can reasonably do to keep it happy in here. So if the nonrepresented employee did 5%, I would suggest that we do the same for Brian. I want to keep him around.
Yeah, so 5% is going to be a little over $7,000 a year. 4% would be about $6,000 a year. And a 3% would be about $4,500 a year.
Well, I would argue for 5%.
Is that total compensation? Does that include?
That's, that's just wages.
Okay.
So there would be some additional add-ons on top of that for.
So what's 40?
Social Security.
Social Security impurs and whatnot, so.
I think Cecilia figures an extra 40%.
Yeah, so you'd add 40% on top of that. Probably, yeah, at the 5%.
I see.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend a 5% cost of living adjustment to the city manager's salary for the fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Moved to second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Carry with my majority. Anything else under city manager and staff? Report your comments. You have nothing more to say?
That's right.
I find that hard to believe. Hey, resolutions. Resolution number 3506.
So this is a resolution adopting the city of Dallas fee schedule and repealing section four of resolution 3497.
This is the thing we went over last.
Yeah, so we went over this in the work session at the last meeting. You'll notice that the fee schedule is done in a different format, which makes all the formatting issues that we had last time go away because of an amazing city reporter who did that. There was just one question really outstanding that they wanted me to deal with. The police department's towing fee versus their impound fee. And speaking with Chief Simpson when he got back, the impound fee was an old fee that we don't utilize anymore. And the tow fee is the administrative cost of processing a towed vehicle. The client, whose vehicle is towed, would pay the tow company the cost of the tow. So the $150 fee is just the administrative cost to process a towed vehicle police department ministers. So that's what that fee is. Otherwise, these are as they were at the last meeting.
It's little. One must have missed it at the last, the last time I read this, but the garage sale permits.
Yep.
It's little. But to charge somebody $10 to have a yard sale, it's a lot to me.
Yeah.
I mean, the price, okay, we got to maintain your signs.
That's on page 23 or 24.
Page 39. From $15 to $10 refundable, $20, $10 refundable. I want to use this in our sales because we need the money.
Do we have a problem with those? Obviously, yeah. Is there a problem?
There are a couple that I have found in the community just walking around and being like, that's okay. Behind some porch wall. But typically, we get them back. We did just replace a lot of the garage sale signs last year in the budget because they were getting kind of tapped. So we did just replace a lot of them. So the, yeah, the fees that we're proposing, you know, we're not going to lose any sleep over not increasing that fee.
I didn't think so.
Yeah. But there are, you know, there's, there's processing and administration. You know, getting this out. We have to input all that we, you know, type of person that has returned to the garage sale sign. So there's a, there's associated with that. And this just recovers a big amount of cost.
I'm finding it came out this whole thing because, you know, we're, we're, we're not. Cost of services. And this particular one is, you know, it's such a myth in the broad and general scheme. But it's a kind of thing that from a PR standpoint, somebody wanted to make a mountain out of this molehill. There's good ammunition to do inside. My information is just to back off the road. That's just me.
How many garage sale permits do we have in a typical garage sale season?
That is a really good question that I don't have the answer to. But I know that there are times on weekends where we run out of garage sale signs because.
Because it's about many.
Right, yeah. I would say during the garage sale season, you know, May to December, we have at least two or three each week that are preutilized. And in some of those weeks, we all are gone. And I believe we have 10 signs.
Do we have a problem of people not getting a permit? Is there a garage sale anywhere?
That happens from time to time, but it's pretty. People have become very familiar with this process. So, yeah, and we may, and we may have more than 10 signs. I just, I'm trying to picture how many we have downstairs.
I think people respect, you know, the deposit and the fee because it does keep our neighborhood and our community looking nice by and large. But it already meant $5. It didn't used to be. It used to be a $10 charge, fully refundable. Then it went up to a $5 charge, and now it's a $10 charge.
Yeah, so if you'd like to keep that at 15 with a $10 refundable deposit. There you go.
That's a lot of people time. That's a lot of staff time.
Yeah.
Oh, we definitely go in the hole. But, you know, again, our goal of our fees, especially fees like that aren't to recover all of our costs, is to just, you know, recover some of the costs. Because I don't have a person that just processes garage sales. I don't have that person. Yeah.
I thought that was your job.
If you'd like to keep that at $15, the $10 refundable deposit, again, we're not going to lose, we're not going to lose.
Yeah, I know, it's little.
A lot of that.
So do we make?
Well, yeah, you've got the fee schedule in front of you. Probably the best way to do it would be to give a motion to approve the resolution with the fee schedule. You know, because, and then have an amendment to restate the garage sale fee.
To do that is two separate.
Two separate resolutions, yeah. Or, you know, actually, the resolution doesn't come up on a motion. I think maybe just a motion to amend the schedule. Let's just do that and then it'll get passed.
I'll move to amend the fee schedule to leave the garage sales fee as is.
A second.
Okay, I was waiting. Any more discussion? All those in favor of changing the garage sale or leaving it the same was signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, carried unanimously.
So now the resolution for regular roll call vote to amend the fee schedule.
Heard the reading of the resolution. More discussion.
I, I just want to say thank you to whoever did this wonderful work to make it very readable. It was so much easier to read, and I appreciate it so much. Yes, I know, I'm staring at her. I, but I think that it's one of those little things, like we were just, Kim just talking about the little thing, which, this is, makes it very readable and easy for the public. And I appreciate it so much. That's it.
Okay, you heard the reading of the resolution.
I just want to say thank you for taking another look at the tow fee because I consider it a status type of fee. The status is social, economic people that cannot afford, want to take care of their vehicles. Then they end up down into the roads, into the weeds of the criminal justice system. Taking away that income is so acute. You don't know the magnitude that hits.
Yeah. The secretary will call a roll.
Counselor Stroh. Counselor Shane.
Yes.
Yes.
Isn't it Schilling?
Yes.
Counselor Adams. Counselor Briggs.
Yes.
Counselor Briggs.
Yes.
Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Nine to zero.
And the resolution says 3506 is passed when unanimously decisioned. Is there any other business? No other business? Well, we're going to end this meeting and start the Urban Renewal Agency. So don't go anywhere. Council meeting is closed. I'll open up the Urban Renewal Agency Board of Directors' agenda for June 5th, 2023. The roll call will be the same as the council roll call. So we're good there. Approve the minutes of the May 15th Urban Renewal Agency Board of Directors' meeting. Need a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, carried unanimously. Next is resolution number UR 2023-01.
So this is a resolution approving the purchase of that real property located at 791 Main Street, Dallas, Oregon, by the city of Dallas, Oregon, by and through the Dallas Development Commission Urban Renewal Agency, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and instruments necessary or appropriate for said purchase. And this is the Bank of America, former Bank of America building.
And you've heard the reading of the resolution, UR 2023-01. Any other discussion?
Since we have a lot of time to think about this while we're waiting for DED or whatever else, how far along are you in terms of trying what you, what you want to do and how you want to do it?
So Charlie Mitchell's been working closely with our facilities folks. There is, we have been inside the building recently. We've done an evaluation of what's in there. There is a lot of things that we can scavenge out of that building for repurpose, for city purposes. For example, there's a very nice circulation type desk that can be refurbished for the Aquatic Center. We're going to take that out. There are a lot of lighting fixtures, doors, other things on the inside that we can reuse in our, in our other facilities before we raise it. So step one is to go in and take out everything that's usable for the city so that we're getting value out of that building that way. We'll also use that facility for some police and fire training purposes. We will make the building not attractive for, for those who are living on the streets and wanting to utilize that space. That building has been a concern. And that bank has, you know, the last year really had challenges, you know, having to come out and remove people from living there. So we'll secure the building and put up some no trespassing signs for that purpose. We will start dismantling portions of the outside. You have the kind of art deco metal structure. We're going to take that down right away. That's my personal request of trying to get that done. Yeah, so then we'll just have the planners that will retain. Right, we could, we could. Call it art or do something.
I know, inside we put lights.
Probably, we can do a lot of stuff with it. But we'll eliminate that right away. And then we'll clean up the property. There's some weeds growing and stuff, so we'll just clean it up, make it look nice. From that point then, moving forward, we'll start a community engagement process with the agency here and deciding, you know, hey, how do we then engage with the public to say, hey, we have this building, we want to repurpose the property for, for development? You know, what do you want to see that community? And I think getting feedback both from the business community and our citizens at large will be important. Once we get kind of the vision for what that is and what you as an agency want to see there, utilizing the citizens as well as your Urban Renewal District Advisory Committee would be a good committee to make sure we're, we're looping them and having them be part of those conversations. Then I think once you kind of have the vision, doing an RFP to engage with a design professional to design that for you, at least in concept. And then once we're satisfied with what that design concept looks like, we can start to engage the development community for who can then build that for us and eventually own it. So it'll be just a public-private partnership to get a development to take place there. I was running some numbers with Larry Briggs earlier today just for fun. You know, in our wildest imaginations, if someone came in and wanted to put a $20 million building on that property, we run the taxes on that and what that would benefit. The city's Urban Renewal Agency. Right now, that building as is, we collect as an aggregate for all the, all the taxing authorities, $16,000. It's a $20 million investment on that building or that property. The property taxes just for the city of Dallas.
$56,000.
$56,000.
Well, sure, because it's increment. It all comes, it all comes.
Well, and that's not including the county's taxes, the school's taxes, none of those taxes. That's just the city of Dallas's tax rate would be $56,000. So including others, it would be $75,000. Which is what we're trying to do, right? We're trying to increase the tax increment. So 16,000 dollar tax contributor to 75,000 dollar tax contributor is really good. So that's what we're after.
Have we thought about using that building during Crazy Days?
Yep. We have. So in the interim, there's a couple of things we might use that for. We could certainly use it for some stuff during Crazy Days. There's also a bounty market that we're working on as a city. A bounty market, like a farmer's market.
Oh, oh, I heard bouncy.
Yeah, not bouncy, sorry. A bounty, bounty market.
Like crew selling.
I are, I are from Utah and speak. So the, we'll have a bounty market there, a farmer's market. And that would be a candidate for a site where we could have that, at least while it's vacant.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Heard the reading of resolutions, UR 2023-01. The secretary will call a roll.
Director Jance?
Yes.
Director Shane?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Schilling?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Yes.
Director Berriantos?
Yes.
Director Briggs?
Yes.
Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Passed by unanimous vote. Anything else?
Just to follow up on that item now that it's been approved and I can sign documents, we plan on closing on this property Thursday of this week. So we'll own it really soon.
Yes, we got it quick before the county goes. I didn't say that.
Anything else for the governor's order? Any other?